Good evening. Welcome to the Troy City Council meeting of January 21st, 2025. We please request that you silence your cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And tonight, we will have invocation by Mrs. Snee. Is that correct? And then the pledge. Please stand.
Recognizing the different faith traditions in our community, I'd like to offer a prayer adapted from the Book of Common Prayer. Almighty God, bless the leaders of our land, that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to other nations of the earth. To all in administrative authority, grant wisdom and grace in the exercise of their duties. To those who make our laws, give courage, wisdom, and foresight to provide for the needs of all our people. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. We commend to your gracious care all the men and women of our armed forces at home and abroad, and those in public service in our city. Grant that your spirit may so move every human heart, that barriers that divide us may crumble, suspicions disappear, and hatred cease, that our divisions be healed, we may live in justice and peace. Amen.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Here. Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Twiss?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Severt?
Present.
Mr. Woodden?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Mr. Pierce? Mr. Schilling?
Move to excuse Mr. Pierce.
Second.
Moved to excuse Mr. Pierce by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce is excused.
Motion to excuse Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Motion to excuse Mr. Schilling by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twiss. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling is excused.
Mrs. Knight, would you please read the minutes of the January 6th, 2025, meeting?
Minutes of council, January 6th, 2025. Committee reports. Mr. Rozell provided the committee of the whole regarding ordinances number O-5924 and O-602024, reading both the majority and minority recommendation. Resolution number R-1, 2025, authorizing sale during calendar year of municipally-owned personal property which is obsolete, was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-2, 2025. ODOT cooperation for an urban paving program on West Market Street was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number O-592024, enacting sections of the zoning code related to permitting one medical marijuana facility was postponed indefinitely. Ordinance number O-602024, enacting sections of the zoning code to permit one adult-use cannabis operator recreational and B4 district was postponed indefinitely. Ordinance number O-1, 2025, amending section 1143.17 of the zoning code was given first reading and was adopted. There was following various communications, council adopted it adjourned, I'm sorry, council adjourned at 7:23 PM.
Move to accept the minutes as read?
Second.
Motion to accept the minutes by Mr. Twiss, seconded by Mrs. Westfall. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Motion is adopted, minutes are approved.
Thank you. We will move to committee reports, and we will start tonight with community partnerships. Mrs. Marshall?
This committee met January 13th to Ohio Municipal League Challenge of AT&amp;T's Tariff Application before the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. If AT&amp;T is successful, other utilities could make the same filing with any governmental entity requesting the relocation and undergrounding of communications facilities existing in a public right-of-way, becoming responsible for paying the cost incurred by the utility company. This would have a negative budgetary impact for governmental entities. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the City of Troy to support the OML's challenge of AT&amp;T's tariff application in any subsequent and/or necessary legal, administrative, and legislative efforts needed. Because of the dates involved with the OML filing, this committee supports emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted by Mr. Severt, Mr. Twiss, and myself as chair.
Any questions for anybody that didn't make the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
If I can give you an update on this.
Okay.
Still appreciate, and we still recommend that council pass this this evening because the issue is still there. Just as an update, after our committee meeting last week, AT&amp;T pulled their current petition in front of PUCO. They're going to refine it, but they did say that they were coming back with it in a slightly different version. And so, having this resolution and this legislation available is still a priority for us.
Priority for us.
But the January 18th deadline that I had mentioned on Monday night is no longer applicable.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, moving on. Streets and sidewalks. Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just prior to reading the next two reports, I will remind everybody here, there is a committee process. And I know conversations occur behind the scenes and trying to work things out, but there is a committee process. And keeping the, at least committee chair for whatever committee with whatever the item is, is important. So if we would do that well ahead of time, that might not create any heartburns in the future. Future. And I know this is the second time that I've had to remind this council of this sort of thing. So if you would do that in the future, just give that some thought when you're having behind-the-scenes conversations, that would probably alleviate some tension. So moving on. So the Streets and Sidewalks Committee met on January 13th, and this is an amendment to the agreement with American Structure Point to look into a feasibility study with Main Street Intersection and Experiment Farm Road. Committee members Phillips and Westfall met on January 13th to review amending the agreement with American Structure Point, Inc., for additional pre-designed services of a feasibility study of the intersection of West Main Street with Experiment Farm Road and Stanfield Road. This study has been requested by ODOT prior to the city proceeding with authorizing the final design for this intersection improvement project, as discussed in the detailed report. And it was the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with American Structure Point, Inc. of Columbus, Ohio, to perform additional pre-designed work of a feasibility study for the intersection of West Main Street's State Route 41 and Experiment Farm Roads and Stanfield Road improvement project at a cost not to exceed $120,000. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chair.
Questions?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. As the, this issue has been bandied about a little bit, and we have two members of council that are not here. I have spoken to the chairman of this committee and to the member who is here, and I will be asking for a second reading of this so that we can perhaps gather some more information as well as get participation from the other two members of council for this particular matter, Mr. President.
Which is Resolution 42025, correct?
What's that?
Which is Resolution 42025.
Our?
Correct. Our 425.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I do apologize, I wasn't unable to attend the committee meeting where this took place. I just want to make sure I have a few things clear. So, the money requested is for a study and see whether, you know, what is going on up there, whether we need, we want to move forward or not. But we are not committed to do anything else after the study, correct? I mean, if the study comes back and says, "Don't do one," or "at all," we don't have to do anything. If it comes back and says, "Hey, you need to put a roundabout in," we can consider it doing at that point, but...
The study is not likely to say, "Don't do anything," and leave it, since this has been a congestion issue probably for 10 to 20 years. I mean, it's been for a long time. What this study is, is a feasibility study. It's being required by ODOT, and it will use current data, current modeling, current standards that ODOT has in place to determine what the best alternative is. That could be a roundabout. That is not saying it's going to be a roundabout. There's no preconceived notion that it is, other than back in 2023, when the council authorized the grant, that was the recommendation from the consultant. ODOT is considering that. We thought that ODOT had agreed with the consultant. They've come back to us and said, "We'd like more information. We'd like another simulation. We'd like to have some public input on this, to take that into consideration as well." And that's why the cost of the study is relatively high as it is. It is, you know, they could determine that a roundabout is not the best. They could determine that a widening of the intersection is a better alternative all around, or they could come up with something that we didn't even think of, you know, think of. But likely, it'd be one of those two alternatives, roundout or an intersection widening. But again, this is not steering it in any direction whatsoever. This is for ODOT to look at it and determine what they feel is the best for that intersection based on further study, new simulation based on current traffic movement, traffic volumes, traffic speeds, et cetera. Can I respond to that real quick?
Just because, and I don't mean to stop your interest, Mr. Twiss.
I had a number of questions today, and Jill, too, was kind enough to spend, I don't know, an inordinate amount of time with me today, so I appreciate your efforts. But maybe you could compile sort of what you and I talked about and disseminate that to us, and that might, I don't, sir, I don't, whatever you have, though, I'm not trying to step on your toes. But I thought I became way more aware of a number of facts that I wasn't aware of from our discussion, and perhaps we could do something like that. I don't mean to stop, but is that okay with you? Yeah, no, we had already talked about that, and we're drafting something right now. Mrs. Rhodes and the assistant engineer as well, Kristi.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I'm asking him for dispensation to cut it running. So would this necessarily necessitate another committee meeting?
I don't.
With the information that's coming forward?
You always have the prerogative to do that, and maybe after we send out the email with the additional facts, whether you want to or not, I think it'll just clarify some things that were discussed and maybe lost in the, you know, all the back-and-forth on Monday night. And maybe it'll just summarize and clarify for you a little bit without needing a committee, but...
If you want, we'll send it back to the committee.
Well, if we did, I will not be here next Monday, so it would have to be in two more weeks.
But we're not in any...
We are in...
A little bit, aren't we?
Yeah, we discussed that, whether it was possible to go a second reading, and it is. We do have timeframes that we have to follow. This is not just an ODOT project, it's an ODOT-managed project with federal guidelines and timelines. And so, the further that we push this, the closer we get to those timelines that we don't want to get to. But we'll endeavor to answer as much as we can in the email.
Do we have any kind of a timeline of when that might be coming?
What is the timeline?
Maybe tomorrow. Either tomorrow or Thursday at the latest.
Right.
They'll print it up, you can read it on your trip.
Mr. Twiss? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Twiss.
I was just clarifying, you kept saying "they." "They" is ODOT is requesting this study.
Oh, yes.
And we're using the American Structure Group.
American Structure Point is the engineer that did the original study for us.
And they're going to do the study to help present that information to ODOT.
And to the public.
And to the public.
Correct.
We kept using "they."
Did we have some, did we have a feasibility study on when they originally did their presentation?
We had done...
And ODOT's wanting to update it?
We had done a safety study, we had done a simulation, we've done a couple of components originally, starting in 2019. And when it was authorized, it was using data that ODOT, as I mentioned earlier, wants to see updated. Also, they've tweaked their software and their standards and their assumptions, and so they want, that's why they want us to present new data.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. Is this the same consulting firm or whatever that recommended the roundabout?
It is.
Over on Dorset and McCag?
Is it the same one?
Dorset and McCag?
Is it Dorset and McCag or the...
Experiment Farm in Maine. They're the ones that did the original. Oh, they did Dorset and McCag?
Yeah. I was just curious.
I thought that was LJB, wasn't it?
We worked with LJB, they were the prime consultant, but we worked with American Structure Point to lay it out. So they were a part of the team, but they weren't necessarily recommending.
Who's our group for the Staunton and Adams Street one?
Staunton and Adams. Sorry. It is American Structure Point.
Anything else?
And just so I'm clear, they're requesting this or requiring it?
They're requiring it.
Required. So we have to do it. For us to move forward, we... That's what I thought. That we had, we didn't really have choice about it. We had to do it, right?
That is probably true. A clearer way of saying it, I, yes.
If we want the grants.
Yeah, if we want to move, if we're going to move the project forward, we need to get their approval. Their approval depends on that study being done to their satisfaction.
Any final questions? Not at this point. When we get down with the committee reports, you can. Mr. Phillips, you have another report? That's your only one? Okay. We have come to the point where the citizens can come up and ask questions and give you two minutes.
No.
I've got another...
That's what I thought. You said, "No," okay.
I thought you were just looking for comments.
No.
So item number two with the Streets and Sidewalks Committee, committee members Westfall and Phillips met on January 13th to review amending the, oops, sorry. Sorry, didn't forward to the next report. Again, Mrs. Westfall and I met on January 13th to review the proposed 2025 paving program. The program includes several roadway sections, and the list is attached. It is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the 2025 paving program at a cost not to exceed the $1.5 million. Again, this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chair.
Any questions on the paving program? Thank you, and sorry for the confusion. Now, we have reached the point of where anybody in the audience could come up and address anything that's on our agenda. You come to the podium, give your name and address for Mrs. Knight for the record, and you will have two minutes of this portion to ask your questions and make your comments.
My name is Kay Catherine Freedley. Nice to see all you folks, my first meeting here. I just had a question. So the way I understand it about the intersection, Experiment Farm in Maine...
Before we get going, she also needs your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. 1143 Scott Street, Troy, Ohio.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Now you're good.
Okay, I'm good. So it sounds like Troy started the project and wanted to look at that intersection, Experiment Farm in Maine. Was that because we were having accidents there?
Accidents are one aspect of it. This is an issue that actually was highlighted, I don't know, probably 18, 20 years ago, that, you know, at various times, we have backups that go clear past Walmart with the expansion of Honda to the south, with the addition of Pella, with the continued growth of Maryville and the industrial park area there, and with some additional development going on to the west on Main Street. All of those factors, as we look, you know, we're continuing, continually looking at our long-range transportation plan. We've identified, again, 20 years ago, several sections in the area of the intersection where we know that various parts of the roads need to be expanded. Once you start looking at expansion, then you always have to look at the intersection. The way the federal process works, you get into the pipeline way early, years and years early, and you work your way through the long-range plan, then it becomes part of a transportation improvement plan, then it becomes study after study after analysis, and then finally, you ask for money, which we did in 2023, with the hope that we would have been awarded in fiscal year 2028, which would actually have been available mid-year 2027. We were awarded funding for the following year, and so by 2029 is when we'd actually be looking at constructing. So there is a, you know, you can see there's a decades' worth of planning that goes into these, and so that's when that started.
Okay, yeah, and that sounds kind of similar for most government things. Thank you for answering my question.
You're welcome.
Okay. And I didn't quite understand the thing about AT&amp;T tariffs. Can you explain that? I know you read a statement, so maybe just break it down into regular people's language.
Sure. So AT&amp;T being one of the utilities in Ohio, they, there's a process at the state level, the Public Utilities of Ohio, PUCO, regulates the rates that AT&amp;T, among other utilities, can charge. There's a state law in place that when there are municipal projects, actually local projects that involve expenses related to relocating lines, burying lines of the utilities, that those are not charged back to local governments. There is a provision, though, that the PUCO can grant a tariff, what they call a tariff, to a utility that would enable them to charge if they want to, but, you know, once they do, they're always going to want to, right? Charge the municipality, in our case, the City of Troy, for the cost in advance of doing the work, of their costs, AT&amp;T's costs, to move any kind of utility lines, be it burying or just relocating them, anything related to any public project. One that comes to mind could be the phase, it was done during Phase 1, of West Main Street project, where we built the duct, the ductwork underground, and all of the utilities did then bury their lines. That part of the project did not have any cost to us. AT&amp;T filed a petition around the holidays, December 18th, I believe, with PUCO to ask them, to grant them the tariff, to allow them to start charging us and every other municipality or local government. And there is a 12, or, I'm sorry, a one-month, 30-day window that if nobody appeals or objects to that, then it would automatically go into place and they'd be able to start charging. Well, we caught wind of it, actually, the Ohio Municipal League that represents municipalities across the state, they follow those actions at PUCO and the state legislature bills, et cetera, and they alerted us to it and said, you know, "This is obviously bad for municipalities." You know, the utilities, they have adjusted their rates a long time ago to take care, you know, to absorb the costs, any of those costs that they would otherwise incur. And so now they wanted to, on top of already having the rates in place, also then be able to charge us again for that. And OML has been willing, like they've done on other statewide issues impacting local governments, was, is prepared to file a petition protesting that tariff. AT&amp;T recognized that there are a lot of unanswered questions that OML and many municipalities have been asking them in the last few days, if not weeks. And so they've decided that they're going to pull that petition at this point, but they've made it clear that they're refining their petition and they will be filing it sometime early in 2025.
Okay. Well, that makes a lot more sense, and I'm sorry, I just didn't quite understand everything on that. That's pretty much all my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Steve Hendrickson, 975 Dickerson. I just got a question on the $120,000 new study. Is that just going to present to the state data, or will it include a recommendation on different options?
If it's run the way the last one is, I'm getting a head shake by Ms., or a head nod, I guess, by Mrs. Rhodes, that it would include a recommendation, and that would be, pardon the colloquialism, but spit out from the analysis that's done. But it will also be informed by a pretty comprehensive public involvement aspect. They will, we will have onsite, an onsite meeting. There will also be a virtual component for somebody, or for folks that can't be at the meeting but want to Zoom in or Teams in or whatever, whatever they're using now. So that will be part of that process.
So it's likely that that study is going to have at least one or two recommendations to the state? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The other thing I'm concerned about is between that and the Main Street improvements. One of the things you got to be careful of is what happened to Dayton 30 or 40 years ago. Merchants downtown, David Reich and the Beerman people, wanted to make sure 75 went through downtown. So it would bring customers to downtown. And that worked for a while. They didn't realize there was a two-way street. Those same interstates that brought customers there took customers out of town. So don't think for a minute that what we're talking about is going to say, "Oh, everybody's going to get off the interstate and go downtown." That may or may not be the case, we don't know. And the other thing is, before you get too carried away, the price of this thing keeps going up. So if it's a roundabout, maybe you ought to put a fountain in the middle of it so people can go there instead of downtown. Last week, I walked through downtown, there was an awful lot of empty retail space, which concerns me a great deal. Because I'm not, I don't see any initiatives. I'm worried about it because I don't know what's going to happen to bring those businesses or more businesses downtown. Already had one jeweler, has already moved to the other side? I don't know what's going to stop people. So let's be careful, we take care of what we already got instead of spending, you know, so far, we authorized $620,000 on this thing, and with more to come. So let's make sure we don't create a reason to leave downtown, okay? That's all my questions. Thank you for answering my question.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to ordinance, or resolutions. Moving on to ordinance, or resolutions. Mrs. Knight, could you please read Resolution R. 3, 2025, please?
Resolution number R. 3, 2025. A resolution supporting the Ohio Municipal League's challenge of AT&amp;T's tariff application at the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio and declaring an emergency. This has been discussed this evening. First reading.
Need to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt resolution by Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, could you read R. 4, 2025, please?
Resolution number R. 4, 2025. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement, amendment, with American Structure Point, Inc. of Columbus, Ohio, for a feasibility study of the intersection of West Main Street, the Stanfield Road and Experiment Farm Road in the city of Troy, Ohio. The cost of the study not to exceed $120,000. First reading.
President, this will go into a second, to a second.
Second reading, fine.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Second reading. Moving on to Resolution R. 5, 2025. Mrs. Knight, could you please read that one?
Resolution number R. 5, 2025. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the 2025 paving program. Cost not to exceed $1,500,000. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Having no ordinances tonight, we will move to communications. Is there any this week, Mrs. Knight?
Yes, just a reminder about filing the financial disclosure statements. You received information from the Ethics Commission on this, I think, last week.
Thank you very much. Mayorota?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Law, Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Law Director, Mr. Kurbur.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would just, it's going to be cold tonight, open up your cabinets to get some air in there, maybe drip the water a little bit, and just try to save on any burst pipes. It's a lot easier to prevent it rather than to fix it.
Mr. Severt?
Thank you. I have just a few things. One, I'd like to reiterate my thanks to Jill Christie for our discussion this morning, or the, you know, I guess this morning. Second, I didn't know this store existed, so I'm going to hopefully pass a little bit of information on to people. But when my son was in town for Christmas, he got us a vinyl record player, as he's into vinyl. I saw Mr. Widdon at Resignation Records, but apparently Troy is well-known in the area for having one of the best vinyl record stores. It's across from the old Troy Daily News building, and I don't know what that exact address is, but it's on the other side of the street. The guy's name in there was Mark. He was very knowledgeable, good guy, and so if anybody is into vinyl, or the resurgence of vinyl, as my twenty-four-year-old son indicated, it's cool to have a store downtown that offers that. And then on a, on a more serious note, to some extent, as a number of you guys know, my father was a fireman for almost thirty years. When the weather is like this, please keep in our thoughts and prayers, the first responders, the firemen, the policemen, the trash men that are out picking up our trash this morning, I saw them at, I don't know, probably seven-thirty this morning, eight o'clock, and it was dark and well below freezing. There are a number of people in this community that are out and about in this weather, and it's, we, we owe them a debt of gratitude and to keep them in our thoughts and prayers. That's it.
Mrs. Snee?
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Mrs. Westfall?
Nothing this evening.
Mrs. Marshall?
I do.
All right.
I wanted to congratulate Officer Chris Baker on his retirement, twenty-five-plus years of service for the city, and wish him well.
Mr. Widdon?
I would like to congratulate my alma mater, V. Ohio State.
Not, not representing Texas or anything, but Mr. Phillips.
No, I'd be a little sad after that, but I'm, I'm very happy that the Bucks won this last night, and I could breathe again after the game. That's all I have.
Mr. Ohio State Twist?
Yeah. Ditto to Mr. Widdon. Nothing else?
Mr. Kurbur?
I already had my shot.
We had your shot about five minutes. Okay.
Public service.
Don't shoot the messenger. I promise to ask these questions. They're, they're not necessarily criticism, they're just questions to change. And since Jill's here, we'll direct it to Jill. On plowing, just curious, there's some observations sometimes. It doesn't look like we, do we try to plow down to the pavement?
Yes, we do.
Okay, because sometimes it looks like, and I know Main Street, the main drags are, will definitely get down the pavement with the traffic.
Okay.
Yes, and, and we have rubber-tipped plows, because, you know, if, if.
You don't want to dig it up.
We could pick not only the ice, but if the ice is in cracks, then maybe the asphalt comes with it.
Because, I mean, overall, you did a great job, I think. And, and the guys were out. You hit the cul-de-sacs extremely early, particularly on the first one. I know we utilize other departments as well as the dump trucks, which is great. Second of all, a couple calls, couple references over the wonderful, maybe the wonderful article that was pushed out about ticket revenue. Is there any parking ticket revenue? Is there any city capacity? Is, is there any one thing that's causing it to be lower, or just?
I apologize, I don't, I don't read it.
Okay, well, it was, it was comparing the drop-off in, in ticket revenue, and it was along the lines of stuff we've had discussions in the budget thing before, whether meter made, no meter made, I'm sorry, ticket patrol guide.
Meter man.
Meter man, what have we got this week? Did the light go out?
So, this, this trend really started when council changed the, reduced significantly the amount of timed parking on-street. And so what we've pretty much focused on more than not are incorrectly parked vehicles on the street, including those that are not staying between the, you know, the lines.
As opposed to the time that they're.
Yes, because, you know, we, we eliminated a lot of spaces having any time limits as a convenience, and, and by and large, people have, have been very positive about that. The, the businesses and feedback that we've gotten downtown is that they appreciate having the, the parking control officer out there, not to harass people, but to, to make sure that, that there is sufficient turnover, as well as that longer cars, or I guess trucks, aren't still sticking into that driving lane, which can be a significant hazard. So, you know, yes, we're writing less tickets, there are less violations out there, but, you know, it's a service that we've always subsidized, and every year, especially since the council changed the timed parking, that I've noted that in our budget discussions in November, in November.
Okay, because I know Chief McKinney was here a couple months ago, they, either before, after meetings, talk about the number of warnings they've given to, I don't know whether it's on, I can't recall if it's on parking or not, but thank you very much on that one. The last one, how's our Main Street project? Is it on schedule? Jill?
Yeah, our Main Street project's on schedule. Obviously, it's kind of shut down with this cold temperatures, but once the weather comes back, we're looking, depending on when winter kind of breaks, and it looks like long-term, get, and no snow on the ground, obviously, and ground's not frozen, get some concrete done for sidewalks, and then once weather breaks permanently, we'll be able to get the road ground down and then get it resurfaced. And then we also obviously have Dorset Road in the intersection, the bases are in, I think we're just waiting on pole delivery. And then we're also looking into the streetlights, and we're waiting on cost back.
And the second question is on that. We have from Phase One all the way up to Ridge, and then from Ridge, oh, those are the railroad tracks. We have the black poles like we have downtown. Are the black poles going to be consistent from downtown to the interstate?
I was not.
We are not. You know, we, we discussed all of this several years ago when the, the project was finalized and, you know, designed and finalized for, for bidding. At that time, wooden poles, which are what are up there, we are looking at an alternative, because Miami Valley Lighting owns those poles, and so we have a schedule of basically leases that we, we use them for. They do have a couple of options for aluminum poles, and so we are looking at the, at the incremental cost of upgrading the wooden poles to the aluminum poles. They don't have a, a black pole option, similar to what we have out there. Those were custom, and they, they had quite a long lead time, I want to say nine to twelve month lead time to order those.
I think the, the main concern was, or a, a majority of that concern was metal aluminum versus the telephone pole, since this is, we deem this as our, being our main entrance, we buried all the utilities. For lack of better terms, you stand on the overpass, look downtown, you see the courthouse without seeing eighteen zillion utility wires. But if we had, I'm glad we're going to the alternative, seeking out the alternative, because otherwise you're no better off than what we have in Westbrook, or Southview, or whatever, and you have an inconsistent project.
Sure. So, just let me, on the record, clarify. At this point, we have asked Miami Valley Lighting to give us the, the additional cost at that point, then we would come back to council to get your approval, because we are, those costs are anywhere from $200,000 to $250,000, because there's a significant amount of poles there. And so we will bring those to you, because there's some installation costs, and then there's, there will be an incremental increased cost in the general fund for operating that we pay every month for the streetlights. And so we'll share all that with you and, and make sure everybody is in favor of doing it.
That should answer the questions right now. Thank you very much, Jill.
Thank you.
And Patrick? Audience comments, further topics, to finish any topic you started before.
My name is Deb Hoggett. I live at 421 South Plum Street here in Troy. Today is the fifteenth anniversary of the Supreme Court's decision in Citizens United versus Federal Election Commission, a ruling that opened the floodgates of big money into political campaigns. We can and we must close the floodgates. I'm here to encourage Miami County citizens to support the We the People Amendment, which will soon be introduced in the 119th Congress. The proposed amendment continues to gain traction in the U.S. House of Representatives, and it makes two things clear. One, money spent on political campaigns is not protected speech and shall be regulated, and two, only natural persons have inherent inalienable constitutional rights. Corporate entities created on paper through a chartering process do not. Billionaires and large corporations spend money to buy access to our representatives, Democrats and Republicans alike. Access gives them the power to influence laws, policies, and regulations in ways that put profits over people. Ohio, for example, has opened our public lands to the fracking industry despite protests of local residents and activists concerned about the dangers to public and environmental health. But the problem isn't just big money and politics. We must also end the misguided doctrine that a corporate entity has inherent inalienable constitutional rights. Starting back in 1886, the U.S. Supreme Court has been granting so-called constitutional rights to corporate entities, and not just First Amendment rights to the exercise of free speech by spending money on political campaigns. The Supreme Court has also ruled that a corporation has a First Amendment right to not speak about such things as chemicals used in fracking fluid that may leak underground and possibly contaminate water sources, a Fourth Amendment right to privacy and refusal of surprise inspections, a Fifth Amendment right to be compensated for future profits lost as a consequence of government restrictions, even if those restrictions protect public welfare, and a Fourteenth Amendment right to equal protection under the law, which means a local government like Troy cannot enact laws that favor locally-owned businesses and family farms over wealthy multinational corporations. Corporations are necessary, but they should benefit all of us, not just shareholders and CEOs. Corporations should be subordinate and accountable to the public. The proposed We the People Amendment is key to ensuring subordination and accountability. And we invite those who agree with us to sign our petition at movedformen.org/motion. And before returning to my seat, I'd also like to add that Heather Sturgill of Troy had an excellent op-ed piece published today in the Dayton Daily News with the headline, well, actually, the online headline was different, but in the, in the published paper today, "We Must Push Back Against Unchecked Corporate Power." And I strongly encourage you to take a look at that if you get the, the Dayton Daily News. Just not go online and look for it, because it's an excellent, excellent op-ed piece. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comment? Thank you to who the organizers and Charlotte Rammer and the rest of the organizers for yesterday's Martin Luther King program. Yes, it might have been condensed or shrunk because of the cold, but it was, was a good program. Lunch was good, and thank you, that committee, for continuing to do what they do on that observance of Martin Luther King Day. With that, we are adjourned until February 3rd, 7:00 p.m. Thank you.